Are we good?
Yeah.
Okay, we are live. I will call the board meeting for July twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-two to order, the regular board meeting of the Board of Education, Community High School District, one twenty-eight. Let's do the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Carol, can we have a roll call, please?
Jim Batson.
Here.
Kara Benjamin.
Here.
Don Carmichael.
Here.
Cara Drumkey.
Here.
Lisa Hassel. Sonal Kukarni.
Here.
Casey Rooney.
Here.
Okay, thank you. As noted, Lisa Hassel will not be here this evening. She had other commitments. I will be presiding this evening and review the agenda. I also want to make a quick comment. And also thank some folks here, Carol and Denise. This evening, we're starting a new system, or it's called Board Docs. It's actually a method of organizing the documents related to our board function as well as generating a workflow here for us to use while we're in the meeting and some other features that we're going to all learn about. So if we get a little off track here a little bit, as the meeting goes on, you'll understand we're all using a new system. So but thank you, Carol, for helping guide us through this whole process and hopefully it'll be a smooth one this evening. So I will review the agenda. We have two public hearings. The first one is for a budget amendment for the fiscal year twenty-two budget. That will be followed by a public hearing for a fund transfer. And then after that, we'll have invitation for public comment. We'll have some good news. We'll hear our FOIA requests. They have a student recognition. We do not have a student. Okay, so we will review an update on the strategic plan. Have a consent vote agenda. Some items in the program of personnel committee will be covered and the facilities and finance committee, a number of items to be covered there. And then potential reports from Illinois Association of School Boards, although I don't have anything to report on that tonight. And from Special Education District of Lake County, do we have anything?
No, one little thing I may want to mention.
Okay, we'll circle back around that. And then we have item for future agenda items, and then we will go into closed session. And there should not be any action after the closed session tonight. So we're going to close session. We'll come back out of closed session, but we'll be finished at that point in time. So back to the top of the agenda, let's start with our budget amendment, public hearing. So I call the public hearing. Open the the public hearing. And ask for any public comment.
Can I maybe? Can I talk about it first?
Sure.
So a reminder, so this budget amendment originally was put in place for the transition program because, you know, when we had done budget fiscal year twenty-two budget, transition program wasn't an approved project at that point. And due to timing, we had anticipated we could be spending some money out of that project before June thirtieth. And so just to be safe, to put it some extra money there, in order to amend your budget, you have to do the same process as an approval. And it's 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 a it's a timely process that has to have a thirty day notice and a paper before you can do a hearing. So there's a there's a time period you have to do. At that time, I'd figure I'd rather be safe than sorry, get this get this wheel moving as we got closer to the end of the fiscal year. End of the fiscal year, realizing with lead times and everything like that, we're not really going to be spending much money out of that project. And as of now, I do feel very comfortable to not move forward with a budget amendment. As we talked about last week in committee, I would only do a budget amendment if you really have to do it. We don't have to do it here. We've only spent about eighty-nine thousand dollars towards the transition program at this point in time, and there's enough in other accounts that will cover that for sure. For example, our our Fieldhouse project came in under budget, and so that has more than enough room to absorb anything there. And so the primary reason for that was to make sure there was enough room so that you didn't go over budget, which is illegal. No, no, but I don't anticipate that being necessary anymore.
Okay. Any questions or comments? I guess we don't have to take any action or anything. We're good to go. So I will declare the hearing on the budget amendment closed and then open the hearing for fund transfer. So we can start with, is there any public comment? Doesn't look like there's any here. Any email comments for that? No? Okay. So I'll turn it back over to you, Dan.
Yeah, just this is a the legal process by which we're allowed to transfer money, but there's three funds you can transfer between pretty easily. The Transportation Fund, the O N M Fund, and the Education Fund. This transfer is intended to transfer one million dollars from the Transportation Fund to the Operations and Maintenance Fund to pay for capital projects. I would still move forward with this transfer. Regardless of the previous item on our agenda. So this is still a transfer we want to do. The legal way to do this is you have to have a hearing, which is that what this is, and then you can approve the resolution. Depending on the type of transfer, there could be a different legal process to go through, but this is the process for this kind of transfer.
Okay, thank you. And so this will be on the agenda later during the facilities and finance to actually make the motion and vote on that. So any questions or comments from the board? Okay, hearing done. We will declare that hearing closed. Next on the agenda is invitation for public comment for the general board meeting. Anyone wish to speak? Oh, hearing done. We have some emails.
I do have one.
Okay.
We have a letter from John, what, excuse me, John Hetzel. Hi, our daughter is an incoming freshman, class of two thousand and twenty-six. Our other daughter will be class of two thousand and twenty-eight. The primary V H H S sign on Lakeview Parkway needs a contemporary progressive refresh design and presentation. Currently, the sign and font looks like it's from a spaghetti western from the nineteen sixties. And the branding does not reflect V H H S very well in its appearance. For all that is hyped about V H H S by the school board and community, now more than ever, it's time to polish the image and get this update in budget allocation. D one twenty-eight spends a lot of money on a lot of different enhaps enhancements to the school. It's time to update the sign to reflect the school, students, and community better. My business career spans twenty-five plus years. The cost of the sign to update is nominal comparatively to some of the other aesthetic expenditures and enhancements by D one twenty-eight. It's time to better represent the school and the students. I sent an email previously on this matter to the school several months ago and received no response. I even suggested at that time, have a sign competition for the sign. For the V H H S students to submit graphic design entries and then vote by students, call it a design contest to better promote and enhance V H H S, so it reflects today versus nineteen ninety-nine or nineteen sixty-nine. If you truly are inclusive, let the kids design something that best represents the students for the students. Please address this email and consider the proposal. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mary. Thanks for that individual for sending in that comment. Moving on, the next item on the agenda is good news and Dr. Herman.
Yes, we do have some wonderful good news to share. D one twenty-eight Special Olympians have had an amazing summer. Earlier this month, they competed in the USA Games in Orlando, where they won silver in Unified Soccer. They were joined at the USA Games by coaches Andy Compton and Vince DeLuca. Shortly after returning home from the USA Games, Storm athletes traveled to Special Olympics Illinois Summer Games held June seventeenth to nineteenth in Normal, Illinois. They were also accompanied by Andy Compton and Corey Atwell. Those who received medals at the state games were Haley Dunbar, gold in the two hundred meter, Hannah Creach, gold in the fifty meter, Hannah Creach, bronze in the two hundred meter, Mackenzie Runke, gold four hundred meter, and soccer team silver in the championship game. Congratulations to all of our athletes and the coaches on an amazing twenty-one, twenty-two competition year. Next, we have two staff members to celebrate. First, D one twenty-eight Director of Information Technology, Mark Torres. Mark Mick Torres was recently honored by the Illinois Education Technology Leaders. Torres, who retires this month from D one twenty-eight, will receive the I E T L Annual Delta Award for his contributions to promoting technology and education in Illinois. "We are thrilled that this award is going to an individual that made such positive strides in educational technology," said I E T L President John Connolly. D one twenty-eight IT manager Temple Murphy, along with IT managers for Wombo, oh, Warmbold and Eli Kelly nominated Torres for the honor. The official award announcement and presentation were made at the annual CTO Summit held June seventeenth at the Wrigley American Airlines Conference Center. And next, our own Mary Toddrick was recently received an honor for the two thousand and twenty-two Publications and Digital Media Awards sponsored by INSPIRA National School Public Relations Association. She received an award of merit for daring one twenty-eight, the podcast. Entries were judged with an entry category only against those from organizations of similar type and size. Each entry was judged on overall excellence as well as its quality compared to other entries. The top award in each category is the Award of Excellence, followed by Award of Merit, and then Honorable Mention. She will be recognized among her peers at the annual meeting and celebration of achievement at next month's INSPIRA Seminar in Chicago. Congratulations, Mary.
Congratulations both to Mary and to Mick. That's a great honor. I happen to, I also belong to that organization, and there's some really great leaders in that group, and Mick is definitely well deserving of that that honor. So congratulations, Mick, if you're out there. Okay, next on the agenda, FOIA requests?
Yes, we did receive two FOIA requests. One was for information about residency requirements. The second was for demographic data. And the third was for discipline referral data. All were answered within one week, and the time spent was six hours for our staff and two hours for our attorney.
Okay, next on the agenda, as we said, it's actually the president's report. I will take an opportunity just to to thank everybody. The administration, the staff, this is the first meeting post the end of the school year and just what a terrific school year under some rather challenging circumstances, especially as we began the year and and how, you know, it's really a very successful year. So I wanted to thank everybody, thank the board members, thank the administration. I think it's a it's a well deserved summer to to reflect and be able to gear up for the next for the next year. So thank you to everybody.
Thank you. I accidentally, the other one was a multi-part, and I skipped the second one, so I apologize. The second one was requesting information related to insurance contributions, the percentage for each category of worker and the some some total cost of our insurance coverage.
Moving on, strategic plan update.
To well, tonight.
I'm sorry, strategic plan update.
I wanted to have this be a part of my update at every month now that we will tonight will be adopting our strategic strategic plan. And so we my intention every month to have whatever progress we've made or information to share be a regular part of the superintendent's report. And occasionally we'll have a bigger item in terms of there's something more substantial that would require a full agenda item. But just so you know, this will be the way that I communicate with the board on our progress.
The motions later in the agenda, right?
Yes, it is. It's under P and P.
Getting used to the new system.
Yes.
All right, so we will we'll move on with the consent vote agenda. Any questions or comments on this? Anything we need to exclude? Everyone's good with this? Okay, we have a motion, please?
Move to approve the consent vote agenda.
Second.
And Casey?
Yeah, second.
Okay. Okay.
That's right. I have to say my name, right?
Yeah.
My name is Don Carmichael.
Yeah. So as as part of this new process, Carol is doing some live updating of the board information, of the board meeting information, so that people can see it. So, okay, so can we have a roll call, please?
Sorry, you tell us when you're ready. New system. We're all we're all learning.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Kukarni.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes and switch over here. Tell how the Chromebooks are by the battery line. Moving on, so now we're into the Program of Personnel Committee. We have we don't normally do anything with the summary. We have it as part of our packet. So the first item to to discuss is the approval of the D one twenty-eight strategic plan. So here we are again.
Yes, so last week we had a wonderful conversation about the recommended goals and about the other parts of the plan that would be helpful as guides for our work moving forward. And so I captured all of that information into the document that you see attached. So this should be a reflection of the conversation. And so if you have any further questions or comments, I'd welcome them, but otherwise we should be ready to move forward.
I did have one question that was brought to me on the when we look at the roadmap.
Yes.
On the delimeters, I think sometimes I just want to be clear, you know, sometimes we can get education.
Yes.
And when it says we will not make decisions without the use of relevant data provided by the appropriate personnel, how do you see that working? Is it coming from bottom up, or is it just more a vague, everybody involved in the process?
I think it was, I read that to be everyone involved in the process, like all all
All stakeholders.
Stakeholders, but we can clarify that further. I want it to be very clear.
I just want to I'm concerned faculty might feel like they're not a part of the process.
Okay. How could we restate that?
I don't know. Just to make sure that it's clear that it's coming from what is the, I mean, it seems very general. What is the data we're looking at? What is the purpose of that?
Well, I
Bullet point.
I think I remember from our conversation, that was one, Dom, that maybe you suggested about a way to ensure that we have input from lots of people. So I might see if you can think of a way to make that intent even more clear.
Yeah, I think it's somewhat vague on purpose because it's an umbrella that whoever happens to be appropriate for decisions that would affect teachers, you would assume that they are part of the appropriate personnel. But I agree with you. I don't want anybody to feel
Maybe maybe instead of those appropriate, maybe those impacted? Appropriate input by those.
We will not make decisions without the relevant data provided by any people. I mean, I see it as a funneling of the data coming from the group that is actually doing the work and that that is the appropriate personnel.
Impact is a good one because
Yeah.
That 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 tells you that if the employees are going to have to do something differently than they're doing now, that they have a decision.
Right.
They have making process.
Yeah.
I'm very happy to make that adjustment.
Everything else just reflected what we spoke about. I just thought that one was kind of it could be anything.
Right. It was the one that was on the menu. So I was I was just trying to go with the one that was suggested, but I wanted to capture what we believe. And so thank you for that.
To clarify. Yeah, it's, I mean, I you know, I I think we sort of understood, but to make sure it's clear to anybody reading it without the context or the background, I think it's important. So
I think I think it's a good distinction. I wonder if the word relevant would actually be a catchall that could work.
Where where would you?
Relevant data.
Well, or just relevant personnel.
Oh, okay. Relevant rather than appropriate.
Yeah, or I mean, I think impacted is fine as well. Just that really.
I like the word impacted because really when we're making decisions and we're making plans and we're making our action plan, the people who are going to be most infected are the ones that are going to be a part of that process of coming up to it. So it seems like impacted.
So I think what impacted is it implies it's only people who are impacted that are part of this, that that may not be.
And only personnel. When in reality, so much of this is about the students or the parents or whatever. So maybe relevant is
Stakeholders.
Relevant stakeholders.
Sure.
I see Mary nodding, and I know she is an excellent editor, so we will make an adjustment on that one to reflect this conversation. Right. Anything else that you would want to have adjusted?
I don't have an adjustment, but more of a process question. So when we approve today, we are approving. I mean, in the growth goals area, we are, are we just approving the goal today and there'll be a subsequent approval of action plan?
Yes, yes. Once the staff returns in the fall and we have the opportunity to engage them in a little bit more deliberation about, you know, some of the things we brainstormed last week that could be possible action steps to take. We can't do all of the things we brainstormed on that list. So we'll be working with the staff to narrow the focus down on those, and we'll bring them back with action steps and metrics that would be aligned to each of the goals. And I even remember us talking about potentially some of the themes, the things that we have brainstormed or talked about in the past. Actually, one or two actions could meet multiple goals because there's overlap. So we'll be looking for that opportunity as well.
I don't know if it's appropriate on the, I mean, I see this as a roadmap to give to our community, give to our parents and say, this is kind of a screenshot
Yes.
of where our focus is. But I continue to go back to, we have other goals that we are consistently working on. And I don't want the message to be that we're not working on that. Is there a way? I mean, this is such an easy way to view it, but and does it fit on this document? But those other five goals of strong instruction, you know, I mean, I can't think them off. Is there a way to identify that those are still goals that we hold as a priority, yet these are our goals that we're looking for growth.
Right. One, one way could be, so for example, high impact instruction that has been and will continue to be Exactly. an important part of our work. It will be one of Yessenius' goals. It will be the Assistant Principal for Teaching and Learning, their major area of focus. So it's not like these particular goals aren't still going to be addressed. It's just not going to necessarily be the attention of the whole district and the board on those particular three. So I'm
No, I understand it completely.
I'm How to communicate that the other things, they're not just going to fall off the end of the earth. We will still have people who will be moving forward on the other areas because our data showed that there still were needs. It's just not going to be as intense a focus.
I think maybe the, you know, the way I look at it is instead of trying to accommodate all those things that we know we have to continue to work on, but you know, and trying to incorporate all the the other things in here is as we communicate this, because it is a succinct document, and these are the focus areas. And again, looking over at Mary, being being the wordsmith and being in charge of communicating this to the community, the students, is how you how you present it and how you present it as these are focus areas and ensure that you know, those other things aren't getting lost, that we're not losing sight of of the other important things. So I think there's a way that as you communicate it to to explain that without trying to incorporate all that, those other things into this document.
I don't want to get, I don't see, I would prefer it not to get wordy because then you miss out. But if we are using this as messaging to our community, whether it's to parents, community, or students, I would say a quick view. Even if it's just turning around on the backside and just saying, these are the other areas of importance, something to the effect, because I think we're going to be questioned on, and I know we can answer that question, but it seems like it would head those questions off at the path at the beginning if they are identified as these are other areas that we have recognized that we are strong in and will continue to develop and continue to be strong in. I see Mary's wheels turning already for a context part for this, absolutely.
Yeah, that's a good way to put it.
Thank you for bringing that up.
And it's, you know, it's on the record too, people that are watching us and listening to us discuss the strategic plan now also recognize that there's
I'm getting guess, nobody's watching. Right, they can always go back.
Somebody somebody will watch it tomorrow. Okay, any other questions or comments on this? We have a motion to adopt the strategic plan that's presented.
So moved. I'll second it.
Do you have to say your name when you?
Drumkey.
Second.
Rooney.
Follow the sheet, people.
You don't want, you don't want me to have to bang the Okay, when you're ready, roll call.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Kukarni.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye. Motion passes. Next on the agenda is the dues for the Illinois Association of School Boards. This was discussed at the committee meeting, actually just last week. Can we have a motion to approve the dues?
Drumkey makes a motion to approve I S A P S, I A S B member dues.
Second.
Second.
All right, any questions or comments? Okay. Carol, when you're ready, we'll do a roll call.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Kukarni.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next on the agenda is the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three Ed Redd Membership Dues. Similar thing, we discussed this last week in our committee meeting and just need a motion to approve the the dues for this year.
Carmichael, move to approve the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three Ed Redd Member Dues.
Rooney, second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, roll call when you're ready.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Kukarni.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Jim, it should probably also be noted that we discussed all of these at committee, but it's not part of the consent agenda. So that we're not having a discussion about it right now is because we haven't had a discussion about it. But we did talk about all these in committee.
Yeah, yeah. Next on the agenda is the semi-annual review of closed session minutes. We review these twice a year to ensure that we still consider them confidential and would like them to remain closed. So this is a normal procedural motion that we do. So actually, the recommended motion that need the needs for confidentiality still exist for all current closed session minutes and those listed below and shall remain in the closed file. And shall remain in the closed file. Can have a motion, please.
Carmichael, and so moved.
Drumkey will second.
Okay. Any questions or comments on this? Well, okay, we'll call when you are ready.
Co-Carny.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. The next item is a intergovernmental agreement with District sixty-eight, and I believe we already have one of these in place with.
Seventy-three.
So we're making the rounds.
Yep, and District seventy was, um, their board was discussing it tonight. We've already talked it at at a previous meeting. And so once they approve it, hopefully tonight, we'll come back and approve. So we're working through all the.
So this basically provides, facilitates sharing of data so that we can learn from each other how our students are doing, because students have come from them. Uh, we can learn um from their information and vice versa. They can learn how well they've done as they progressed into high school, so. And this is, these are things that have happened recently because of some changes in school code and and Illinois law, so allows us to do this. Um, we have a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement with District sixty-eight.
Rooney motions to approve the District sixty-eight uh, intergover- intergovernmental agreement as presented.
Co-Carny, second.
Say that three times.
Yeah, no, I can't even say it once, so.
Any further questions or comments? Again, we discussed this actually multiple times now in in committee meetings, so. Carol, when you're ready.
Um, Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Co-Carny.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next on the agenda is a intergovernmental agreement with Vernon Hills. Park District.
Yeah, correct. There's, there's two on the agenda um, for a recommendation for approval. For District one twenty-eight and the Vernon Hills Park District. The first is for um, sharing of our. Uh, facilities that um, you know, we. We have um, specifically our swimming pool and then some of the facilities that we use with Vernon Hills Park District, Sullivan Community Center. Um, and Deer Path Park that we use for tennis practices, cross-country practices. And some of our physical education. So some of these were in place already, some have expired, and so we are updating um, both of these. Um, and um, Vernon Hills Park District has approved them. Um, we had talked about them in committee and um, so now we are voting on them now.
Okay.
Uh, and they're two separate because they're two separate agreements, because one involves the Rustolian field with some. Money for the replacement of turf, whereas the other one, there isn't any money that we should.
Okay. So the first one is providing joint use of uh, Vernon Hills Pool and various park district recreation facilities. We have a motion for this one.
Benjamin, I move to approve the intergovernmental, intergovernmental cooperation agreement between. The Board of Ed of Community District one twenty-eight and Vernon Hills Park District.
Second, Carmichael. Okay, thank you. Any further questions or comments on this?
No.
Okay, Carol, when you are ready, roll call.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Co-Carny.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. The second one is another intergovernmental agreement with Vernon Hills Park District. This is specifically for the. Vernon Hills High School Stadium. For those that may not remember or may not have been around here or involved. Um, they actually helped us get the very first turf, artificial turf field in that stadium, the park district that is, that is. And through an intergovernmental agreement at that point in time. So this just continues that tradition and helps us um. Uh, share the cost of that, share the value of that as well as share the cost of replacing that turf when it comes to to do so, so. Uh, this is the second intergovernmental agreement. If we can have a motion, please.
We need a motion to approve Vernon Hills intergovernmental agreement uh, with regards to the VHS Stadium.
Drumkey, seconds.
Okay, any further questions, comment? Okay, Carol, roll call, please.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Co-Carny.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. We have employment of employees, a few um. Uh, employment uh, items to take care of. These were not uh, in in time to discuss them at the committee meeting, so these were not. Included in the consent agenda, so. We need a motion to approve these hiring.
Carmichael, move to approve the employment of employees as presented.
Rooney, second.
Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, we'll call when you are ready, Carol.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Co-Carny.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Uh, we do have one resolution for an honorable dismissal of a education support staff. Right, maybe you can describe what that.
Sure, absolutely. So um. In in this position um, that we're looking at, it's in our um. IT department. So just a little history of our IT department over the past. Uh, four years and some things that we've been um, you know, working with, kind of reorganizing. Um, it starts four years ago with Bob Bartnik, who was um, our manager at Vernon Hills. His um, retirement. Um, and during that time, we promoted um, Temple Murphy. He used to be at Libertyville High School. Into an IT management position. Um, moving Eli Kelly and Bo Warrenbold into leadership positions at both schools. Um, and since then, um. You know that we have the resignation of Victor is from his position. Um, and his position as um, the District Educational Technology Administrator, he has not been replaced. Um, and. What we did was then promote temporarily to our District Director of Information Technology. Um, and we still have our um, leadership positions, our IT coordinators at each school, Eli Kelly and Bo Warrenbold. Um, the departments have an office manager, um, one office manager that works between both buildings in the district. A technology integration specialist. We have IT technicians. Um, we have two at each of the buildings, Libertyville and Vernon Hills. Um, AV productions, um, we have a productions. A person at each building, an AV technician in each building, video engineers um, that, you know, work with um, Cat TV. Um, and Cougar Media, um, Dan Treftow and Sandy at both buildings. What we do is, we also have had a position over the years, um, an AV productions coordinator here at Libertyville. Um, and this was a a position that IT and AV were kind of separate positions. Um, but over time, um, you know, information technology and AV productions have kind of merged. Into one department and we really, I think through, you know, Mick and Temple, um, over a number of years. We've streamlined a lot of things in both of our departments. Um, we've done a lot of infrastructure work at both schools. Um, and there's less project coordination that just has been been needed. You know, and so it it's something that, you know, I think Mick has been working on and just kind of restructuring the department. Um, we're looking at that, um. You know, IT and AV are all in one department, so Eli um, oversees that department here at Libertyville. Bo and now they'll be working with, um, you know, Temple and Temple oversee everything for the district. Um, so our recommendation was to eliminate our AV productions coordinator um, position. Um, we don't foresee a loss of IT, you know, services. Um, we create some equity and staffing between both of our buildings. So that was one position that just was different here at Libertyville. Um, you know, this obviously, you know, timing of it, you know, we are eliminating one administrative position from IT and now one ESP position, but again. You know, Temple, Eli and Bo work very well together and we don't see any loss in in our services. Um, when you're doing a reduction in force of a position, so it's an honorable dismissal, just like we did the honorable dismissals of our teachers. At that time, they do have rights to a position. Um, and timing of this, this is something we've been working on. But we also were kind of going to the, um, I think the new year with. We don't have some of our recommendations for support staff of what changes there are. Um, due to other circumstances, but with this position, we do have another open vacancy right now in is an IT technician. And so with elimination of this uh, position, the person that's in that position, we can then recommend or offer the open IT position. To move into, um. Again, you know, this was, you know, obviously a tough decision. You're looking at a position, um, but you're also looking at a person. Um, and so that's always a, you know, a tough decision, but. We feel that it's, you know, the right decision, um, you know, for the schools moving forward. Obviously, with anything. You know, anytime, whether it's teacher, support staff, administrator, changes, we'll analyze those changes, you know, as we go and rely on. You know, Temple, um, and Eli and Bo for input as we go through the the next year. So we do. Have to, the board has to take a res- you know, it has to pass a resolution on that because you are doing a reduction in force on a position. And then it's an honorable dismissal of that person, so they will still be employed for uh, in that position for thirty days. Um, in that position, and then once those thirty days are up, we'll we'll offer the position to them. Before that, they'll make a decision. Once those thirty days are up. Um, they can move into the other position or make a different decision, so.
And you've talked about this with Rob.
Yes.
Prior, so he knows that this, that's, he's not being blind side of this. You're very good about that. I just wanted to be sure that that was out there.
Thank you for the clarification.
Basically moving a coordinator to a technician. Is that what I'm, I mean?
We're offering him, we're offering him.
We're offering him the technician position.
He, I can make a decision on whether or not we take that in a reduction in force. Um, they have a one-time chance to make that choice. Uh, on an opening, and if they don't, then they don't have rights to any other jobs that become open. They can, somebody can always apply for jobs in the future, but. Uh, he has rights to that position because we feel he's qualified for that position.
So we may see him again on the next agenda, potentially. Okay. Uh, any other questions? I keep, I think I'm fighting a losing battle here. I keep moving over because of the sun, but um, we'll, we'll be okay. I'm gonna move this over here, so. Um, can we have a motion, please, to approve the resolution?
Carmichael, move to approve the resolution for honorable dismissal of educational support staff as presented.
Co-Carny, second.
Okay. No further questions? Um, Carol, when you're ready?
Co-Carny.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Okay, and that concludes the Programming Personnel Committee. Uh, Facilities and Finance is next.
Okay. Ready to go. Starting with the uh, Facilities and Finance minutes from our last board meeting from May ninth, any comments or questions or changes? Before those get recorded, okay? Moving on, uh. Closing the loop from earlier in the meeting, uh, the resolution to transfer funds from Transportation Fund to the Operations and Maintenance Fund. This is the. Culmination of all the legal steps required to make this transfer. Dan, any comments? We have discussed and discussed.
Just moving a million dollars from Transportation Fund to Operations and Maintenance Fund.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve this resolution?
Carmichael, move to approve the resolution authoring transfer, authorizing transfer from the Transportation Fund and the Operation and Maintenance Fund. Of Community High School District one twenty-eight.
Drumkey, second.
Motion passes.
Nope, we have to vote. I wish.
I'm gonna vote no just because of that.
True.
Rooney. Aye. Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Co-Carny.
Aye.
I don't know if it's a combination of being.
Now it passes.
Yeah, now it passes being at Libertyville or the new process. We're just sort of all out of kilter a little bit.
Well, no, it's not. It's like my computer keeps going in and out for some reason. I don't know. We've, we've had an exciting day. Um. Moving on to the budget amendment that we don't, we've decided we are not going to. Make this amendment, so we will move on to. The fiscal year twenty twenty-two Audit Engagement Agreement with Miller Cooper and Company. Neutral third party to. Audit our finances and make sure that we are. Doing everything we need to be doing. Any comments, Dan?
Nope.
Nope. Okay, this was also discussed in committee. Uh, any comments, anyone? Any questions? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the Audit Engagement Agreement for Fiscal Year twenty twenty-two with Miller Cooper and Company?
Drumkey, I move to approve the engagement agreement as presented.
Second, Benjamin.
Carol? Whenever you're ready. No worries.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Co-Carny.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to the one-year contract with Athletico Management for athletic training services for Vernon Hills High School. Yeah.
Yeah, this is a same agreement with some updated language from last week. Uh, seven percent increase in the contract to one-year agreement. This is just for Vernon Hills Athletic Training Services. So.
Dan, can we revisit why it's just for Vernon Hills, just in case someone has?
Um, yeah, we went, we went out for athletic training and strength training services a few years ago. And um, and actually previously, um, both schools um, had Athletico, um, and. Um, Libertyville's, Libertyville's athletic trainers was not what they wanted. Uh, Vernon Hills was very happy with what they had, so we. Went out, looked for something different and ended up deciding that Vernon Hills would stick with their trainers that are at Athletico. Um, and. Libertyville was interested in athletic training at Illinois Bone and Joint Institute, so that's where they've had. Uh, and I believe both schools are very happy with the services they have. So it would be easier if you all had one agreement, yeah, but sometimes you don't always get what you want, but they have what they want right now and what they need, so. That's why it's different providers at the different schools, because of the trainers they actually have.
And I, I think it's important to give, especially, you know, the, the trainers in the schools know their populations and if they. See different ways to meet the needs of the students um, with. Different services, I think we, it's important to give them that flexibility within reason, uh, as far as the finances go. Any comments, questions?
I have one. Uh. Athletico's. Got a list of things the clients will do and they have a list of things that they will do. Um, one of them originally was identified as on Exhibit A, Client Responsibilities Item C. Client shall mention Athletico Physical Therapy in all press releases, radio spots, newsletters, or related materials. And I just thought that was bizarre. Because we're gonna put out, you know, paw prints and we're gonna have to mention Athletico on there, and it doesn't make sense to me that we would do that. And then Dan said that uh, there were some things that were, needed some clarification, uh, and so that got changed. B was eliminated. Or changed to, excuse me, C was replaced with B. And so now it reads a little differently, but it's still. We will name Athletico as the official provider of physical therapy and athletic training. We will name Athletico as the official provider of physical therapy and athletic training for Vernon Hills High School in all press releases, radio spots, newsletters, related materials and website. And I guess I just don't see why it needs to be that.
Uh, one, one clarification of what you said, so C. Did say what you said, and then C was replaced with the language that is standard in our contract. B was there before, and that, none of that changed. That's the, that's been the same language, so. B, C didn't eliminate or B didn't eliminate, so the before, whoops, sorry. The before version had B with that ex language and C with the old language. Or C with the changed language. And so then we changed C back to our standard language, but the B language is still there. So B and C were there before, B and C are still there now.
Okay.
Just, it wasn't, it wasn't that it got changed, C got changed to B, it was both B and C were there before, B and C are still there now. The difference between a week ago and today, C has been changed, B has, B was not.
Okay, well, my, my only point is. That. I just don't see why the language has to say that we're gonna put Athletico on every press release that comes out of the building. If it were tightened up to say athletic plus press release, I would be fine with it. But as it stated right now, I don't understand why that's there.
It doesn't have to be there. It doesn't have to say that. It's not.
Okay, that's, that's the change I'm looking for, is a change in language that. Releases us from having to mention them in every press release.
Yeah, I, I would agree. It's, it's not that we mind mentioning them, but this is pre-specific in all press releases, and I think if there was.
You could just put the word may, and then it leaves it open to discretion.
Yeah.
I'd be fine with that.
Client may.
Does say will, though.
Right, that, uh, right. I, I think that's. Name B is just says name.
Right.
But you can infer it as being will name. You can't just put may and then it leaves it open up.
And I'd be fine with that.
So can we make a motion? With that caveat? And before we sign it? Or if that adjustment, that way we don't have to come back and vote on it again.
Just bring it back in July with updated language.
Okay.
That'll be okay. Timing wise.
I mean, that, that doesn't change the relationship. They're still gonna be here next year, so.
I can't imagine they would be surprised. I guess I'd be surprised that it hasn't come up.
It's been in previous agreements, so I don't, I think that it's implied that it would be for athletic, but I understand the close read that you're doing of it. I guess the big question is how have they enforced it? Have they ever come to the school and said, you forgot to, right? Not to say that they can't, but it would be. Do, is the same language in comparable contracts with IBJ?
Their contracts are very different. Just. You usually start with any company's boilerplate and then you modify it two years, so, yeah, IBJ I would look very different.
But they don't have terms similar to that where we are required to promote them?
I mean, they'll, they'll have. There are terms of each agreement. I'm just saying it, it's not like a word-for-word.
Yeah.
Comparison between them. There's a lot of ideas that could be similar. This particular one, I couldn't tell you how similar or different it is off the top of my head.
Shall we table this one till next month?
You want to just make it a future agenda item? To change the wording on Item B under Exhibit A? Can't we just approve it if we have the word may included in?
I'd be.
Provision B.
Yeah.
And if may is not included, then we come back. And that would take it off your table for the, you can.
Are you asking?
Yeah, it works for you, Dan.
Don't. It's probably okay. I don't. Totally know. But I'm, I'm guessing it's probably okay.
You don't totally know whether procedurally this is something we can do.
Yeah, like approve a contract pending. I guess it depends on what the motion is. But at the end of the day, like this is your meeting, so I don't.
I've had experience where a motion has been conditional on word changes. I think, I mean, it's not something we want to get in the habit of, but it definitely is something we can do to continue that. That's the only thing that's stopping this over, so the motion.
Screen wipes process, yeah.
Drumkey will make a motion to approve the contract with Athletico and Vernon Hills conditioned upon the inclusion of the word may. And. Exhibit A, I moved it, Exhibit A, Item B. Client may name Athletico as dot, dot, dot. Yes, Exhibit A, Item B. So it reads client may name Athletico as, and then. Second, anybody?
One, that's pretty nice, that that's all real time.
It's a lot of pressure from Carol. No, I was asking for a second, but.
Carmichael, second. I just bullied right in there.
Absolutely.
May and Exhibit A, Item B. So it reads client may name Athletico in public releases. Her views.
Very impressive. Roll call whenever you're ready.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Cool Carney.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
I guess worst cases, we revisit it next month if they want different language.
Yeah. But in the meantime, the amended motion passes. Okay, moving on to the contract with Quest Food Management Services. This has been the result of a long time coming, a lot of work. Better food, better choices for the students. Very exciting. And any comments, questions? Can the public come and eat? Yeah.
Kudos for this contract. I mentioned this in, in the committee. It is a gigantic contract. That spells out every detail and I'm just impressed with the thoroughness. And I'm looking forward to stopping by and having lunch.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a good win for the district. It's better finances, it's better food for our students, more choices. There's. This, this is, this is a big win. Okay, so may I have a motion to approve the contract with Quest Food Management Services as presented?
Cool Carney, so moved. Drumkey, second.
Roll call, please.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Cool Carney.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Benjamin.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Moving on to the approval of fiscal year twenty-three Treasurers Bond. This is also something that was discussed in detail in committee. This is something that the state law requires us to do. Dan, any comments?
Uh, no, just there's a new, the regional superintendent is asking for an additional certification. Going through everything last year, realizing. Uh, there's an authority that he has to sign off on and he realizes that he did not have the tools available to him to know if these were. All the proper amounts, because you can bond at different levels, and so he was asking for more information from districts. To confirm it's the right amount, so I listed there the anticipated high and we always had a little bit on extra as well, just in case something weird happens with timing. So that we for sure stay within the limit. We used to have a much higher limit years ago, but that's when you had more fund balance, so. Fund balances, fund balances are lower than they were, say, five years ago, so, but we feel that this is still an appropriate level to be at.
And the cost of the bond has not increased from.
Cost of the bond has gone down.
Right.
As well, we've, we nego- a couple of years ago, we negotiated a new rate.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-three Treasurers Bond as presented?
Carmichael, so moved.
Cool Carney, second.
Roll call, please.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Cool Carney.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to the copier lease with Canon and the maintenance agree- agreement with Genesis. Excuse me.
Yeah, so this is the, the, the correct. Lease agreement and maintenance agreement for the, the copiers are able to clarify, make sure we got the right lease for the right amount of copiers. So that's there, red annual cost of the ninety-six thousand dollars, that includes the lease and the maintenance agreement for them. All in with, net with what we're, what we currently have. We anticipate at the end of the day, we'll be spending about thirty thousand dollars less on copiers. Uh, than historically, uh, which is great. There were two. Uh, copiers removed from this, from our system, as we discussed last week, so that's also part of the reason why, as well, so. Yeah, this is here for the maintenance agreement with Canon Genesis.
So there were two copiers removed? I'm just clarifying because the board docs say three.
Sorry, they. I misspoke. They had already removed one originally that was not there. But in the, within the last month or two, I would say we've removed two. So I, I apologize. It is net three that are, have been removed. One was. Kind of removed from the beginning. The other two were removed as we were working through this.
Okay, I just want to make sure it all matches up and. The lower cost is certainly welcome. Any comments or questions? Okay. Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the copy release with Canon as well? Can we, we can do them both in one? Okay. To approve the copy release with Canon as well as the maintenance agreement with Genesis.
Cool Carney, so moved. Benjamin, second.
Roll call, please.
Cool Carney.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to disposal of obsolete technology. We just need to approve the. Scraping of said equipment on this inventory. Any? Issues? Comments? No? Okay. May I get a motion to dispose of the obsolete technology as listed on this sheet?
Carmichael, so moved.
Second.
Cool Carney, second.
Roll call, please.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Cool Carney.
Aye.
And that concludes Facilities and Finance.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next on the agenda, the reports, we have Illinois Association of School Boards. Now just bring this up. I understand the registration for the joint conference is now open, so. Yeah, so, so I think. All of us were around last fall when we did that, so. So it's a great conference, so I'm expecting that quite a few of us will have an interest in attending, so. Uh, just wanted to bring that to our attention. And I also will mention, I met with the Lakes Division Executive Board. A couple of weeks ago and had a great meeting and we're working on the speaker for the fall. Dinner meeting, so. That's it for IASB. Anything from SEDOL?
Um, super quick, so there was a, a meeting scheduled for the beginning of June. That was so underattended that there was no quorum present. Which was a bummer because there was quite the. Agenda to be passed. That meeting was then rescheduled for this coming Wednesday, June twenty-ninth at five PM up in Gauges Lake. The reason I'm telling you all this is because I did email the board maybe like two weeks ago or so, asking to see if anyone was available. Um, I unfortunately will be out of town. And I have. Told the Secretary up at SEDOL that we, it's very likely we may not have an alternate to represent us, so. Unless someone on the board would be able to, you know. Sacrifice, just it takes on, it's a, it's a quick meeting. They're usually an hour at most. And it's important that we have this agenda passed so that SEDOL can continue to provide. Uh, the education and support that our district students directly benefit from. So if there are any board members who would be willing to fulfill that obligation, I would be. Forever in your debt and I'll buy you ice cream personally.
Uh, when is it?
It's, uh, this Wednesday at five PM. I can get you all the deets. No, I know, it's such a, it's tough when they rescheduled it. You know, in the back of my mind, I was thinking this is a real tough week for a lot of people, the holiday coming up, so.
And I know, it's, I mean, you're very diligent at attending those meetings and.
Yes.
I know there are some that do and there are others that really don't, which is unfortunate.
This was the reschedule, you know, I mean, the, the night of. Was one thing, but the reschedule, they tried, they waited and a quorum was never reached. It's kind of a, it was a moment that was not so, not so happy. If it comes to light that you are able to attend, anyone is able to attend within the next twenty-four hours, let's just say. You can let me know and I will inform. The Secretary that someone will be serving alternately that evening, otherwise. We will just cross our fingers that a quorum is reached and that the board business is addressed.
Do, do they do any of these virtually?
No, they did, I think for a while, but no.
I think they might, you know, consider.
I know.
Dial in from the, you know, where I am.
Right, same. So anyhow, if anyone's plans change or if you are able to find. Sometime, I'm happy to get you all the information you need and. You know, if not, we'll just, like I said, we'll hope that a quorum is met.
Thank you. Okay, anything under the Future Agenda Items category? Okay, moving on, we have a. I got, read this, we're moving into closed session for, to discuss collective bargaining matters, five ILCS one twenty slash two. C two and employment of employee, five ILCS one twenty slash two, C one. We have a motion to go into closed session.
Rooney, I motion to go into closed, closed session.
Drumkey, second. Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Cool Carney.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Are we?
Yeah. Probably gonna stand up and.